Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the final city council meeting for two thousand twenty-four. Been an interesting year. I hope everybody has enjoyed it, and I wish everybody prosperous new year. I call this meeting to order. Could we have roll call, please?
Certainly. Counselor McBride?
Here.
Counselor Wheatley?
Here.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman?
Here.
Counselor Kilburg?
Here.
Mayor Rosacker?
Here.
Counselor Cloyd?
Here.
And Counselor Carmen?
Here.
Thank you.
If you would all stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So if you're following along in your programs today, we are going to move item number four to a later point in the meeting. Denise's husband can't make it until about seven o'clock, so we're going to wait till that to do that. So moving on to item five is our city manager's report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. This is the statistical information, and it covers the period through October of two thousand twenty-four. And some folks might not know, the reason why it's always a few months in arrears is to allow all of the statistics to be verified and to be settled out in the record before we present it. So planning, combined planning decisions, eight. And as you can see, that's a good deal less than the last two years, which were eleven point six, seven, and eleven, seven, five. And that indicates the slowdown in housing and construction that we've seen generally. Permits pulled for housing units, only two, and as you can see, that's the same trajectory. Not many at all. Building permits of other types, zero. Building inspections, and those are indicative of other types of construction work. Permits for decks and add-ons and other general framing and such, and it's at six thirty-six. So that's not slumped much. Submissions through the website, fifteen, and that has slowed down a good deal from a few months ago when we were really roaring along. Social media engagement, similarly, nine thousand three eighty-nine, and that's also tracked down a little bit from a very high period a month ago. Social followers. Holding, oh, social followers holding fairly steady. Public information requests, seven, and of course, each public information request vital for government transparency, but each one does use up many, many hours of staff time that takes that focus. And payments financed did one point one, seven million of payments to accounts payable and one point zero, seven million of payroll expenses. And you can see that over time, the payroll expense averages have steadily crept up as colas have driven up the cost of labor. But I can let you all know that we're still have the same staffing that we did when we had many thousands of less residents. Recruitments advertised, five hires, two separations, none, and workers' comp claims, three. Although at the end of this, I am going to give you some updates from the this month and what where we are with recruiting. We did achieve a period in the middle of last year, or this year, rather, where we had, we were fully staffed. Alas, nothing lasts forever, and we've had a few vacancies that we're trying to fill. Information technology resolved two hundred and eighty-six service tickets, slightly more than average. And we, as you know, had some pesky switches in our ether network recently that had to be replaced. Only one after-hours event was caused in October by that. And that's less than normal. Normally, we have to dispatch IT guys back to the center two or three times a month. The library's on fire. Door count, eight, six, ninety-two. That's a winter circulation number. It looks more like a summer one, but it's not. Thirty-two thousand, four, forty-three circulation events. Library's never been more used than than ever. Two thousand, five hundred and eight calls for public safety. That's a really big number as well. That is a lot of calls placed. Seven fifty-four on traffic stops, also a little higher than the average we've seen. And that's a lot of work by our brave officers on the streets to keep us all safe. Six eighty-one for the citations and warnings, which, you know, with that many stops, you'd expect it to trend up together. And seven drunkards on the streets. It's down, yes, and let's hope it, let's hope it can stay down. Don't drink and drive. There is no excuse for it in today's Lyft and Uber era. Seven forty-nine, one, one calls and two thousand, seven, thirty-eight non-emergency calls. And that's a substantial statistic as well, a little less than the averages, but it's a big number. And of course, there's a reason why you can expect to have an officer dispatched to your house within two minutes. It's because we have our own dispatch center. And that's one of the reasons why we are the sixth safest community in Oregon. And most of the other ones are tiny little towns that never have any issues. So that's a very meaningful thing. Water production, sixty-two point seven million gallons. Sixty-five point two, nine million gallons of sewage were treated. So that's at that time when the two things are passing each other. And as the winter flows continue, you'll see the numbers will flip. One thousand and nine work orders completed by Public Works, and each work order represents one task or mission. And that's been a little bit lower this year than in previous times. But they've also been involved in some fairly large projects, which have had all hands-on-deck effects, such as when they stabilized the Hess Creek sewer line before it could rupture and spew sewage into Hess Creek. And we got that dealt with. So that's the end of our statistics to the end of October, two thousand twenty-four. But I also did bring a bit of extra information about what's going on right now. So for the current month, we had, for accounts payable, our highest check was Andy Medcath Construction, and it was one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight, forty-three, and sixty-nine cents. And that was for construction at City Hall. Our second highest check amount was Portland General Electric, ninety-two thousand, twenty-nine dollar and ninety-nine cents, our monthly electric bill. And then we had NetApp Solutions, which was a payment for a server upgrade, sixty-six thousand and eighty. Also, currently, we have the following open positions. So if you would like to consider working for the best city in Oregon, you should have a look at our website. We have an engineering technician, three position open. That would be somebody who would work as an inspector of public works, construction, or indeed, private sector, construction. We're looking for an entry-level police officer, or it could be a lateral police officer, so one position. And the other bloke hasn't left yet. We're just getting ahead of the game, so we never drop on staffing. A lateral communications officer. An entry-level communications officer. And lastly, an operator one, that's like an entry-level position at the wastewater plant. And that is because of shuffling around, because of promotions, because, of course, Dan Wilson retired. So are there any questions in general?
Here's you've done a great job, Will. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So the next item on our agenda is public comments. I have one from Colm Riley. Yes, sir.
Hi, City Council. Thank you for taking me here, my comments. My name's Colm. I live in Newburgh. I've lived here for the last eight years or so. And I had two comments, and a couple of these, they're just kind of coming from a perspective of city development and city planning, and just kind of really looking at the city. And I've kind of fallen in love with Newburgh, and it's late-bloomer potential. And there's a few things. And the first one I wanted to bring up was seeing the the park across the street from City Hall for sale. And I would just like to make my voice heard that I think that's absolutely horrible idea. You, we live in a city that has a limited amount of open space, and it has even less open space in a downtown setting. And for a city to be able to own a park right downtown is such a tremendous asset. You will never, ever get it back. You can have it, and you can get rid of it, but you'll never come across a vacant open park. And if you think about all the different iterations of where could this city be five, ten, twenty years from now, and the role that a park could play, I just think it's incredibly short-sighted to look at the need of a budget and the need of having a deficit and just think we could sell a piece of property downtown. You know, I mean, you could look at selling City Hall. It's a historical building. It's valuable. It's beautiful. You could move the city hall somewhere else in some nondescript warehouse-looking location if you want. But, and I'm saying that kind of facetiously, but I want to put the two kind of on the same thing as you. City Hall has its own role, and having a park across from City Hall has just a tremendous value to the city. And park space and open space is going to become even more of a premium. And not coming in here with some grandiose idea of what to do with it or some immediate development, but I'm saying if you just think about the city five, ten years from now, I can look at a city council ten years from now, wondering, why did we get rid of an open-space park in downtown? It's so valuable. And if you look at the money that you would get for that park as a percentage of the budget of the city of Newburgh on an annual basis, when your PGE bill's ninety-two K a year, like, it's a fraction. And so I would just urge you to think about that. Second, this wasn't on my list until I read the article, but the sternwheeler. I am a boater. I absolutely love Rogers Landing. I love the river. And I love the role this city plays and the the fact that there's a river in this city. And I come from, I was on the city council in Hudson, New York in two thousand and one to two thousand and five. This was a time when cement plants and plants all up and down the the Hudson River were closing. Just so much like Newburgh, a former mill city looking to refine, redefine its identity. And up and down the Hudson River, in New York, you've seen this move to ecotourism, to agritourism, to city tourism. And it's connecting the fact that this city's connected to the river. Nobody would know that. The amount of cars that run through this city, and nobody's got an idea that this is connected to the to the river. And I look at that river, and I'm like, and the fact there's no more mill, and if there was, and I sat at the cultural center and went through some of those plants, and I just think about if there was mixed use, residential, commercial, restaurants and shops on the ground floor with condos on the second and third building, second and third stories, people would buy that up in a heartbeat. Waterfront is limited. And Hudson, and and Newburgh has access, and to have a corridor from downtown to the river and back to create another residential space, to create another commercial space. I see kayakers bringing, vendors bringing in ten kayaks, and people are lining up, and they rent them out of the parking lot. I see families going down to that tiny little pocket park to try to swim, and we get drownings every year. I see boaters come in and kayakers trying to launch and people fighting at the dock. And I just see this potential for walking trails, for kayaking. I mean, the economic potential of it is just, it's limit, it's it's a connection, and people are going to value the connection of the river and the connection of the water more and more. And we did that in Hudson. We bought the spirit of Hudson. We got a sternwheeler. We docked it at the park. We gave them a pilot program, payment in lieu of taxes for five years, so they didn't pay anything, and they slowly scaled up. But it was used for weddings, company parties, all sorts of events. People could stage in the park that was adjacent to it. The yacht club there decided, because they were private and the city never got around to it, but they developed a wharf system. People paid hundreds or thousands of dollars a year to be able to dock your boat there and have access to it. So I just look at that lot and look at the potential and look at the view, and I drive by there, and I see shotgun homes and an industrial lot for sale with a pile of gravel, and it makes me cringe. And then we get one good idea. And that's where the momentum should be. So there's just so much potential there, and I just urge you, I don't even know what to do with it. It's so tied up in county and city and other properties, but we're sitting on a goldmine, and the fact that this city's connected to a river, just, it means so much, and it has an incredible history in this town as well. And doesn't matter, everybody loves the river. People love to hunt. They love to fish. They love to swim. They love to boat. It's something everybody has in common. So that's all I got.
Thank you very much. Your comments are well received. So next is new business. Will, who's presenting on the Building Codes Division Support Amendment?
Scott himself.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the City Council, Scott Seale, Community Development Director. And before you this evening, we have a request for, I'm going to ask you to advance the slides, Rachel, please. This is a request for council direction to authorize the city to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Building Codes Division. BCD has developed this IGA as a way to facilitate intergovernmental assistance, mutual aid between and among city and county governments in Oregon and their building departments. And it's something that we're already in the business of doing. We provide building services to three other cities, including Newburgh and Yanville County, and so we're very familiar with this model. In fact, it's one important way that we're able to maintain a sustainable building program in Newburgh, because at times when we slow down and the other cities are are active, it it keeps our, it keeps our organization afloat. So Oregon, to their credit, has created this mutual aid program where cities and counties can opt in, sign up, and join under this umbrella agreement that provides voluntary mutual aid. For us, it would address workload imbalances or where we're slow. As I said, we can offer to provide assistance elsewhere. Where we need additional support, we can look to our neighbors and and other jurisdictions to fill in, whether it's plan review services or inspections. We do have a third-party consultant who provides overflow assistance when we need plan review or inspection help. So this would be another alternative. It's good for competition. It's good for efficiency in our operations. And the agreement that is before you has, you can go ahead and advance the slide, please, has a bill rate structure that's it's comparable to what we what we currently have set up with the cities. It actually has a higher cost recovery model for us than what our third-party contractor charges. I think it's seventy-five percent of our plan review fee or fees would go to that consultant when we use them. This provides for ninety percent as as one example. So the agreement sets forth the basic terms. It's again voluntary. We would work with other jurisdictions who reach out to us, or we would reach out to them. And it avoids the sort of duplication or inefficiency and having to negotiate these agreements individually with every city and county. Next slide, please. And just by way of example, this is a new program. I believe it's been up for maybe just a month or two. And so far, the other jurisdictions, and I checked the the roster today, that have signed up include, among them, Yanville County. So we're in good company there. And the staff recommendation is to move approval of resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine, fifty-five, authorizing the city manager to sign intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon for building evaluation services. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Peggy, go ahead, please.
Scott, I think you answered it, but I want to make sure. I was wondering what advantages this would have to what we're already doing with our local counterparts. But it sounds like just one agreement is needed instead of one with Dayton and one with Dundee.
That's that's correct, Counselor Kilburg. The advantage is that it would allow us to engage with any city or county that is also on this roster and without having to adopt an IGA, the city adopting an IGA, the other city adopting it, and it's just a lot of work, as you, as you're well aware. Yeah, I think that's the main advantage.
So as other IJAs come up for, I guess, renewal or whatever, does this just automatically come in and replace them? So it's just a, it's just, is a seamless process that steps up when the others are are through, or?
Well, the existing-
Because I know we have somewhat with some other cities locally.
Yeah, that's right. So the existing agreements that we have with Lafayette, Dayton, and Dundee would remain in effect, and we would continue to to maintain those. And as long as the the parties are supportive and and feel that it's good value, we'll continue to do that, to do that.
How long is this good for?
It's, I believe it's, I don't think it has a sunset on it, so but we could, you know, we can withdraw from it at any time. I don't think there's any harm in keeping our name on the list.
Now, this is probably a bookkeeping thing, but on the resolution itself, it says the effective date of this resolution, I'm sorry, the the city manager is authorized to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Building Codes Division, providing for building evaluation support services through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Something has to be amiss there.
This, oh, okay.
I can make the the change in here if you tell me what the date should be.
Oh, I see. Thank you for for picking up on that. So the amendment to that language would say authorize the city manager to sign the agreement with the state for building evaluation support services, period. Exhibit one.
Through June thirtieth, two thousand thirty-four?
The term of the agreement on page one of ten says becomes effective on the date the party signs. Oh, I see. Thank you. I appreciate that, Rachel. So that answers your question, Counselor Wheatley. Does it, when does it expire? June thirtieth, two thousand thirty-four, and so that would be the correction to the resolution. Thank you.
All right. Is there any more questions for? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash thirty-nine, fifty-five, authorizing the city manager to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon for building evaluation services.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. We approve resolution number twenty twenty-four, thirty-nine, fifty-five. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Passes unanimously. Thank you, Scott. Thank you. We we are planning our committee assignments for two thousand twenty-five, and I think everybody in the audience or the people who have applied, thank you very much for being part of the the process. And we are going to proceed. Will?
I I noticed that we've skipped one item over, which is my evaluation. But but if that's the message, I can.
No, that's just me getting old. Thank you. All right. The next item is Will's evaluation. So Will, we we have all received information from your department heads. One of them rated you as satisfactory. The majority then rated you much higher than that. So we we want to move forward based on that. I personally want to say that I believe that you have done an exemplary job in the past year. Your willingness to take care of the things that come up has been remarkable. I can't think of a lot of other things that you should do to make this city run any smoother than you already do. We've challenged you in many ways this year. And our city is still up and running, and our city hall still stands and is occupied today. So that being said, any of the other councillors would like to make comments? Counselor McBride?
Well, I I just would like to say that I I too just think that you've been doing a great job. And I think the difference that has gone on with the staff under your full-time tenure is is just remarkable compared to what it was when I first came on this council. And I know some of the other city managers. And being in business as long as I've been in business, I know what a good leader and the qualities of a good leader is, and and you have that. And so I'm I'm grateful for everything you've done here. I'm I'm thankful for the way that you want to move forward. And you're quick to answer questions if, you know, we happen to call. And so I just, I appreciate everything you've done.
I mean, just the move back into City Hall caps it off, and you guys didn't miss a beat, and it's been a year. And you just kept everything going, and now you're back in, and you kept everything going while you did that huge move. You have worked so hard, and your staff as well, and you've earned every, you've earned this performance evaluation rating of, most of the time, you exceed expectations, and you're at least excellent. I mean, I don't, that's like a dream performance review, and you earned it. And one other just small thing I had mentioned to Will a week or so ago, that I'd like to see the PowerPoints have fewer words and just be a little briefer, and I just appreciated how receptive you were to that feedback and that, and you and you typically are, and you went right into problem-solving mode and with Rachel and figured out a way to do that. So thank you.
Counselor Yarnell Holloman?
Well, I just want to, I mean, obviously, I agree with everything that's been said, but I just want to say that I know this wasn't your career path that you anticipated and probably not your wife's career path that she thought she was marrying. But I just want to say thank you for being a true leader and stepping up when the city needed you. And I think more so the community needed you and our community stakeholders and business leaders. I hear everywhere that I go that they're just so grateful that it's you at the helm. And I really do think it's because you're a person of the people, and there isn't anything that's below you. And that if something happens, we can know that you're here at six-thirty at night doing something, which I hate and love. But I also think that, you know, as we're honoring Denise tonight, I think that this is very fitting that you're having your evaluation because I know she was a mentor to you, and I just think that you couldn't represent that more effectively, and I hope that someday you'll get back to library land.
Counselor Cloyd?
Yes, sir. Not only are you taking the bull by the horns and just running with it, you did an awesome job. And the short time that I met you, I've learned a lot. And on top of that, you got a really cool accent. And on top of that, you got a really cool accent. So anyway, just keep up the good work. Move on.
Counselor Wheatley.
Um, Will, getting to know you, it's been an amazing experience. You always impressed me with your ability to be creative, to pivot from situations. There's no roadblock that stops you. You're you always surprise me. Yeah, I'm very impressed. You're always willing to listen. You're always very kind. Newburgh is better because you are a city manager. So thank you so much. It's been an honor working with you. Thank you.
One more thing that I would like to talk about is your openness with the community. I have never before participated in any kind of evaluation like this that was done in open session. I I commend you. I it's this could have, you didn't know what we were going to say. We could have said anything, but Will, thank you for being the guy that you are. Thank you for being your high standards, moral standards and integrity. We appreciate everything you do for us. Do you have any comments for us?
Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, anything that we have managed to achieve over the last three years is as much to my hardworking staff, its leadership, all the way through to tech ones and patrol officers at the entry level. When when you get out of people's way and you let them flourish, you can achieve great things. Two items were noted on my review for improvement, and I'll be working on those. First, to send more all-staff email alerts rather than necessarily to through the chain of command to department heads. And I've instituted a process whereby every Wednesday, our leadership roundup bullet points will be sent to all hundred-and-fifty-odd staff. And the second thing is, we're going to be shifting the CM narrative to that more bullet point-driven display rather than presenting the full text. And department heads are going to be providing me with what they consider to be the top three or four bullet points within the narrative each time. As you know, we began our internal city reforms at the end of two thousand twenty-one. And all of the items that we put on that list for becoming a more efficient organization will be complete. And they'll be complete in February if we're able to hit our last few deadlines. After that, we'll be looking at whatever the new council goals are, embedding that in our work plan, and also thinking ahead to our new big infrastructure projects. And this was not my career or my calling, but thank you for allowing me to continue to serve the people of Newburgh to the best of my ability.
Uh, Will, for all the reasons previously stated, I appreciate you as our city manager. I think you do a wonderful job. As witnessed by me, I appreciate communication with me, your candidness, the guidance that you give me on particular matters. I really appreciate that. Your work ethic, when I can catch you after hours at a local restaurant, but also like running back to City Hall to do your job and do do things that actually aren't your job. Your fiscal management, I appreciate, and your ability to listen to any concerns that I have. I think I also saw in the review that maybe you should delegate a little bit more. I think maybe we talked about that previously. So uh, take a little off your plate, maybe. I also appreciate all the hard work you've done while earning a master's degree. So congratulations. Thank you.
Now, to that note, I called him this morning, and Melissa answered his phone, so he must be getting starting to delegate some things. Will, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to approve. Yep. Sorry. Um, I move that we approve resolution two thousand twenty-four dash three-nine-five-six documenting the annual evaluation of city manager Will Worthy.
Second. Give me the number again, please. All right. It has been moved and seconded that we approve resolution two thousand twenty-four three-nine-five-six, Will's annual review. Is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Now, the next item on our agenda is the Board and Committee Commissioned Interviews and Appointments. So are you gonna, are you gonna, which, who do you want up first?
I will call up the committees as a group, and if you are online, I will be promoting you to panelists when your group is called. So make sure that your name is your actual name, so I know it's who you are. Please rename yourself if you need to. We'll call up each group by the commission that they're being appointed to. And then each person in that group will be allowed to introduce themselves briefly, please. We've got a lot of you. And then each member of council will be able to ask one question that the group members can each take a turn answering. If you don't have a question to answer, ask, please feel free to skip. So we're going to start with the Affordable Housing Commission. So that will be Casey Banks, Randy Rickert, Brandon Faildebusk. And if I get any names wrong, please forgive me, and I will learn them by next year. And Samantha Cooley.
We've got a couple online for that.
Okay, I see Casey. Hi, Casey. You can bring her up with you. So would anybody like to start?
Let's see. And Brandon and Samantha are online. Let me pull them up so you can see.
So very briefly, tell us why you're here, who you are, and why you're here.
Sure. Hi, I'm Brayden Fail. I'm here. I was recommended it to like join it by someone who's part of city. And it did interest me seeing as how it was something I could have been, me and my family could have been benefited from in previous years. And if I could help other people have a better chance of being able to live here with affordable housing, that'd be something I'm interested in. I'm currently a junior at the high school here. And I also work at the pool here in town.
I'm Casey Banks, and I am one of the pastors of one of our Newburgh churches. I'm finishing up a term on the Affordable Housing Commission, and I've found that a really great place to serve my community in a way that aligns with some of my personal passions. I've been interested in housing-related matters of many kinds for about a decade and a half now.
Our online applicant here.
Yeah, let's see. Randy, would you like to go?
Sure. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Oh, great. Sorry, I'm not there in person. I had a a business trip that could not be avoided. So thank you for allowing me to to speak in this manner. I currently serve on the Affordable Housing Commission and would like to continue serving the great community of Newburgh in this capacity. I'm I'm pretty passionate about Newburgh in general, have lived here for, you know, over thirty years, and and just looking for a way to to give back to the community, and I've enjoyed my experience so far on this commission and would like to continue to do so. Yeah, that's it's kind of in a nutshell. Thank you.
Fantastic. And Samantha Cooley?
Hi, thank you. Sorry, I have to join you remotely. I am homesick, so I didn't want to bring my germs to the to the meeting today. But I I am from Newburgh and just excited to join this committee and contribute to to this community.
All right, counselors, does anybody have questions for the applicants?
Samantha, it's Elise. Why do you want to be on this committee and maybe not others? Why is this is your, why is this your your pick?
This committee, I I think that it's important that we come collectively and collaboratively and find some solutions versus just throwing things at the wall and hoping that one of them sticks. So having that opportunity to be a voice at the table is really exciting for me. Affordable housing is something that I'm very passionate about. When you when you join a community together, when you have the opportunity to be able to engage your community where they're have a vested interest, homeownership within the community, I I just, I find that it builds stronger commerce and stronger families. And that's really the the reason behind it.
Counselor Wheatley.
Can I ask, I have, well, do I have to ask all the applicants or can I be specific to a few?
I think we've got time to do basically whatever you'd like.
Um, I guess I'll ask Casey and Randy. So you both have been on the commission for a little while. What do you, what would you like to see change or what do you see coming down the pike? Or what do you see as a need? Like, how would you like to change the commission or by being by being on it, what do you see as a need that hasn't happened before that you would like to see happen?
Yeah. So every round of NOFA's that we've done, we've kind of used a rubric that has evolved over the years. And I feel like every round we make it more and more precise and more clear. But there's still one piece on that NOFA that I would like to to gain even more clarity on in future years. And it specifically relates to what happens when a small landlord who owns one or two rental houses, what happens when they apply for funds from the Affordable Housing Commission? Because we've struggled with the clarity of how do we track the long-term affordable housing for that compared to a nonprofit-owned program? So that's just a little piece that I would love to see change in the next year so that we don't waste applicants' time. And so we create clarity for maybe broadening who we can serve. And then we also don't pass on that confusion to you all. That would be something I hope to see.
Yeah, I agree. I remember that coming up, and that was, I do know exactly the issue you're talking about. So thank you. Appreciate that. Oh, Randy. Could we get a response from Randy?
Sure. Yeah, well, I agree with Commissioner Banks. Those are great comments. I also think we should consider, or at least have the discussion about meeting more frequently. Currently, we we meet quarterly. And I know that we have some some larger projects coming up with the possibility of larger projects, you know, a legacy-type project coming up with with the CET funding available. And I'm not quite sure if quarterly is is enough. So I I would like for that discussion to happen, if it could. I think it could benefit benefit the community more so if we were able to meet more frequently and and in person, which is ironic that I'm saying that because I'm remote right now. But yeah. Those are my comments. Thank you.
I'm glad you said that, Randy. We were all thinking the same thing. Go ahead.
How many positions are we looking to fill here? A student and then how many other?
Yes, we have, so all of these applicants would fill all of our openings. Yeah.
Anybody else? Is there anything either of you would like to say?
I'm so excited to maybe have a student commissioner finally. It's been a while since we've had a a young voice represented, and we need that.
What what year of school are you in?
I'm currently a junior.
Junior. All right. So we get two years, right?
Oh, yeah, I will be here until twenty twenty-six.
Well, thank you very much. This is a, well, all of these positions, it takes a lot to take your own personal time and think about doing what's good for the city. So thank you so much for applying. And I guess, should we, should we vote one at a time and just keep moving that way?
So we we can. I have them all down as one resolution if you want to do that. Well, actually, no, we can vote one group at a time if you'd like to. We don't have them as a resolution.
I do have a question for Samantha Cooley. I know she applied for several different openings. So how do we, is this the one that she wants to be on specifically?
So this is.
This is, okay. The process this year, we let applicants put their primary preference down and then any other things they might be interested in. Because often, you know, we might have ten people apply for planning and nobody for traffic safety or something like that. So I opened it up so that we would have that flexibility, and we actually reached out to every applicant about where the mayor has decided to appoint them. And they've all accepted that position, and they're very happy with that from what they've shared with me.
Well, thank you very much. I think it'd be better if we just go ahead and vote on each group while they're sitting in front of us. So at this point, do any of the counselors have a problem with any one of the candidates in this group? Gosh, I'm glad the answer to that is no. So that being said, I move that we accept this group of applicants for this for this committee. I guess I need a second.
Second.
So all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. I Happy New Year, Merry Christmas, and let's get to work next next year.
Thank you. And the next commission will be the Budget Committee. So as you know, the Budget Committee is made up of the city council members in addition and an equal number of members of the public, forgive me there. And this year, they are moving to four-year terms to align with the new budget cycle, so you're aware. So that's going to be Raquel Peregrino de Brito, Judy Brown, Theodore Abora, Austin Crowcraft, and Elias Semen, Semen, Semen Yuck. You're gonna have to teach me your name. Thank you.
Hi there. Welcome. Merry Christmas.
Hello.
So let's same as as we did. Why don't each of you tell us just a little bit about yourself and why you're here? Theodore, would you like to start?
Hi, I'm mayor, council members. For the record, my name's Theodore Abora. Call me Ted. I've been with the Budget Committee for the last four years, so I'm just applying to be on it again for the next four years. I've got a lot of experience with government. I've had over twenty years of finance experience with government finance, both with the state, the city, and with special district now is kind of my current job. So I'm going through financial, the financial process, and next we'll be doing the budget. So I know the finance language that Katie and all the finance people talk, so I mean, I tried to see what where I can serve and be of value, and I think the Budget Committee is where where it is.
I'm Judy Brown, and I was on the committee before. I guess I still am until you decide tonight that you I guess I still am until you decide tonight that you might want me back on. Um, I, uh, was a, uh, teacher, but now I'm retired. And with that I have more time. And, um, so I've taken part-time jobs. So, and this is a part-time volunteer job and I'm super excited again to support our community because I love Newburgh.
I am Raquel Peregrino de Brito and I've been in the Budget Committee three years, I want to say. I volunteer for this to come in and ask curious questions. And to prompt, uh, all of the department heads to explain to us why it's the same, why it changed. And, and, you know, I am happy to use my time to volunteer and just be helpful. And so I hope that I can continue to do that again because those are four, four or five meetings. And, um, I enjoy it working with all you guys to, uh, review numbers and make sure that we're doing the right thing.
Uh, my name's Austin Craig Craft. Um, I'm a controller for a local excavation company. So I just felt like I could bring my experience to help the city. I grew up in a family that served their community in Colorado and I kind of wanted to do the same. And I'm excited to work with people who have done it before and learn from them.
Right. And does anybody have questions for the applicants?
I just had a question if there was a student that we, an application?
So the student is Elias, or, and they are not present tonight, so.
No more questions? Would somebody like to make a motion to approve?
I move we accept this group of candidates for the Budget Committee for the next four years.
I'll second it.
It has been moved and seconded. Do we approve this group of candidates for the Budget Committee? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I got, I got a question.
Yeah.
We're, we're moving to the biannual budget. So the meeting for Budget Committee would be every other year now or?
There'll still be one on the off year, but it'll just be less involved. So yeah, they'll be the big one this year and then they'll be a smaller in between.
Okay.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you all. We look forward, all of us are on the Budget Committee, so we'll get to work with each and every one of you.
All right, our next committee is the Historic Preservation Commission. We have Deborah Burkle, Brian Engstrom, and Karen Tozer.
Hi there. Merry Christmas. So, um, would each of you like to tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're here?
Hello, I'm Brian Engstrom. I, um, have lived in Newburgh for a year and like a month. I'm very interested in local history and I, yeah.
My name is Karen Tozer. I've been here two whole years now. I, uh, I relocated from the city of Los Angeles when I retired. From, I worked for the city of Los Angeles for 25 years and then retired up here. I, public service, obviously, since I worked for government agency is sort of in my blood. I love Newburgh and I chose Newburgh because of its unique qualities and the fact that it does have a lot of historical, um, attributes. And I'd like to see those remain as much as possible.
Hi, I'm Deb Burkle. Um, I served on the Historical Preservation Committee, uh, for the previous three years. And I feel like I just started learning. So I'd like to continue to serve because I'm learning more and I love Newburgh, um, as well as the rest of the people in this, this group. I moved here 15 years ago. I was transferred from a company in Colorado and, uh, just fell in love with it. Oldest son, his family were here and the rest of the family moved here. So we are, we are all Newburgerans now, if I'm saying that correctly. Um, my hope is that we can educate and communicate the history of the area, um, more cogently, more concisely, more effectively to the businesses and the residents. So they have a better appreciation of just how important this area is. So thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for the candidates? Robin.
Um, Deborah, so you've been on the commission. Is there something that you have in mind for the next, your next term? What do you think Newburgh needs? What do you see, what would you like to see done?
The commission has discussed a number of things. And in fact, we're coming up tomorrow evening, uh, we have a meeting to discuss a lot of the, the back room sort of discussions about goals, kind of revisions and things like, like that. I think where, where we're headed is, um, prioritizing communication, prioritizing education. And that could include something like a, a, you know, historical facility. Yeah. So there's just a lot of things that we're talking about. But, um, I just, we all appreciate the opportunity to really have a voice in that and, um, and to discuss our ideas.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I move we accept these applicants into the Historic Preservation Commission.
Second. Has been moved and seconded. We accept these candidates for the Historic Preservation Committee. All in favor signify by saying aye. 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 All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Welcome aboard again. Is that our last one?
No, there's, there's more.
Planning Commission.
We have a couple. Uh, Planning Commission is next. So we have Matthew Mansfield, Elise Stefan, Linda Newton-Curtis, and Jason Dale. We're all here in person. Thank you.
We have two veterans and two new folk. You want to tell us who you are? Jason, would you start please?
Hi, I think I know all of you, but, uh, my name is Jason Dale. Uh, my family owns and operates Sportsman Airport, the airport here in Newburgh. So I'm third generation Newburgh. So we started, my grandfather started the airport in 1946. And I've lived here all my life other than five years in the Navy. And I've been on Planning Commission for 12 years and I want to keep going. And I want to beat Phil's record and I'm struggling to remember his last name. It's GFU professor. Smith, thank you. Uh, who was on there for 15 years. So a few more to go.
That's a lot. So my name's Linda Newton-Curtis and I'm also reapplying to be on the Planning Commission. I've lived in Newburgh for about 30 years now, but you can hear that I'm not from here originally. I'm English of origin. Um, I'm really excited to reapply. So, yeah, that's me.
Hi, my name's Elise Stefan. I'm a senior at the, at the high school here. Um, I was the princess of the Old Fashion Festival over the summer and I just fell in love with like being involved and being involved with this side of the city. I've lived here for 18 years. I was born and raised here. I've loved every second of it. I'm very involved in my high school sports and everything. I just love being a part of things and I'm very excited to be a part of this.
Hi, I'm, uh, Matthew Mansfield. I came here for school back in 2012 to George Fox University and have been here ever since. Uh, I'm applying to be a part of the Planning Commission because I want to have an impact in our community. I think that everyone should be involved as best they can, uh, in what they can do. And I've applied in the past for some other positions and I'm excited to actually get the email back that, uh, you guys wanted to have me, uh, talk to you here tonight. So, uh, yeah, excited about that and excited to help out and be involved a little more tangibly than, than I have been in the past.
Councilor McBride. So, you had her baby, what was it?
Oh, we have a boy.
Ah.
Eight pounds, one ounce.
Whoa. And when was he born?
On November 12th.
Ah, went a little farther than what you thought then, huh? Good.
I move we accept this slate of candidates for the Planning Commission. For the next, what is your term? Two years. Appreciate you applying.
Second. It has been moved and seconded to accept these candidate, candidates for the Planning Commission. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. 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 All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Merry Christmas. Now, I hope that nobody gets offended, but, uh, it's about time to take a five-minute break. If, uh, so let's, uh, get back in here about 7:08. Sorry. Next, we have a rate big appointment of one person.
I'm hoping that that's, um, not because there were, nobody else wanted to ever sit on this commission.
All right. So why don't you go ahead and tell us about you?
Yeah, Russell Johnson. I've lived in Newburgh 30 years now. And, uh, I recently retired and I want to get more involved in helping the city. I have time to do that. And, um, just want to get my feet wet and traffic safety is, you know, something that, um, it bothers me, you know, traffic and what, and how much traffic there is that comes to the town. And so I figured I better go and do something, see if I can help and find out, you know, how these commissions work. Any questions?
Go ahead, Peggy.
Russ, what years? You worked at Hewlett Packard in McMinnville, is that correct?
For a while, yeah.
What years?
And then ADEC as well.
What years were you at HP?
I'm sorry.
What years were you at HP?
Let's see, it would be 89 through 97.
Okay, thank you. I was there, just ahead of you.
So any more questions? Would someone like to make a motion? Mike, go ahead.
I move that we accept Russell Johnson to the Traffic Safety Commission.
Second. Second. Been moved and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye. 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 All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Happy New Year. Looking forward to working with you.
You, uh, there was a, I understand, an accident today between, on Highway 219, between where Wilsonville Road is and, uh, north of that. So because of your work, that is part of the, uh, what is going to be fixed this summer. But hopefully that'll be the last accident we see on that stretch of roads.
So the last commission is the Library Board. And the Library Board is pointed slightly differently than the rest of the commissions by charter, by our code. Um, so the board had, uh, had applicants, they interview their own applicants and then put those forward to the council. So this person is Jessica Hopkins Hubbard and she could not be here tonight. But if you have questions, Corey may be able to share some information.
We need to go ahead and approve them, him as well. All right. Would anybody like to make a motion?
Uh, I move that we approve, uh, Jessica Hopkins Hubbard to the Library Board.
Second.
It has been approved and seconded to appoint Janice Jessica to the Library Board. All in favor signify by saying aye. 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 All opposed, same sign. All right. And that can, yes, Mr. Worthy.
I would just like to thank Rachel for her endless hard work on all of this recruiting and especially upon getting so many youth commissioners as those positions are extraordinarily hard to fill. Her drive and positivity have been immense.
I was, I was thinking the same thing. Earlier, when we looked at this, we had no applicants from the high school. So Rachel, thank you for whatever you did to get them filled up. That was awesome. Next, we have a special presentation, um, for Denise Bacon. For those of you who may not be aware, I think everybody here probably is. Denise Bacon was a longtime counselor in Newburgh. Prior to this council being seated, Denise passed away. And she had such an impact on this community that we together decided that we were going to keep her seat open until the end of her natural term, which is going to be the next meeting. So this is our way to remember Denise. And Will, are you going to speak first?
Yes, and I believe that Chief Kuzmic is going to have some brief remarks as well. When I was very new at this game and frankly reluctant to do it, she was the one who reassured me that I could do it. She supported me in, despite all the things I had no idea about. She took my calls almost every other day. It was probably two or three times a week I would call her, especially in that first few months because I had no clue, um, about so many things. When I was unsure and I knew that I was unskilled, she supported me and helped me to persevere. She was truly a remarkable person. But something about her that some of you know, but many of you may not know, I have met in my life some very brave and very courageous people. But a thing happened to me and it actually happened while I was at school. So I was in my classroom and the call came in that was important. And so I had to step outside of the classroom to take the call. And the call was from somebody speaking on Counselor Bacon's behalf because she was at that juncture unable to speak normally by voice. And the call was to remind me, in, as I interpret it, of my duty and to make it clear to me that no matter what challenges were coming, that I should persevere and stay in the position. What makes this call remarkable isn't just the fact that it was a call to me, but also the fact that it was a call, one of many that she placed that day. And also that it was the last day of her life. Think about that. So who does that? Who has the courage and, and the dedication and the love of their community to do that with their last hours? And I have never, despite all my travels and despite my adventures, experienced anything like that. That's a, that's a one and only. And it, it says so much about that person's spirit and who they were. And, and I think we should all remember her example and try to keep doing our best for the community, even when things are rough. Chief?
Thank you. Uh, the one thing I, uh, always remember about Denise is she was always positive. She supported all of the employees, the residents, and she cared about the welfare of Newburgh. I think the three best, uh, words to describe her, bravery, compassion, and kindness best describe her. Thank you. Thank you.
I know that she has some friends in the audience, would either of you or anybody else like to come and say some words? I think Denise's impact on this city is well-defined, we now call this room the Denise Bacon Room. We have remembrance in various places in this area that will always be here. But more than that, the people who knew her will continue to remember her and remember what she's done for this city for the rest of our lives. She had a very positive impact on me for a very short period of time, I didn't know her long like some of you did. But I respected her. I, I saw the traits that both of you spoke about today. She has been missed and she will be missed in the future. Thanks for coming, Chris. Well, that's the way to end a meeting. If any of the councillors, if uh, there are no objections, this meeting's adjourned.
Alright, I see some smiles and some laughter back in the room, um so maybe we can get started. This is the uh Newburgh Urban Renewal Agency, December sixteenth uh twenty twenty-four meeting, I call the meeting to order, and can we have a roll call, please?
McBride?
Here.
Wheatley?
Here.
Yarnell Holloman?
Here.
Phil Burke?
Here.
Mayor Rossacker?
Here.
Floyd?
Here.
And Chair Carmen?
Here.
Thank you.
Sorry, so we're here for uh an appointment to the NERA Citizens Advisory Committee. And I believe we have our one applicant uh online.
Yes, so the one person is Amanda Case and she is on the meeting.
Sorry, good evening Amanda, would you like to uh introduce yourself to the um agency, I guess, commissioners?
Yeah, hi, I um I'm sorry, I'm really sick, my voice is not um it's hard to talk, uh but my name's Amanda Case, I've been a resident of Newburgh for um almost four years. Uh but I've known I wanted to be out here for much longer, my family's out here. Um I am a high school teacher, I teach English. Um and I really love being involved in all of the areas in Newburgh that I can be. Um I want to help serve the people of Newburgh and make it the best city um that it can be.
Thank you, does anyone have any questions for Amanda? Commissioner Rossacker?
Hi Amanda, Bill Rossacker.
Hello.
What would you like to see happen in the uh, in the urban uh renewal?
Um and this is mostly down at the Waterfret, is that correct? Or is this the downtown?
That's one of the areas, it actually encompasses uh First Street, uh River Street.
Yes.
As well.
Well, um down uh, Down River Street, I think um having a housing and businesses would be really nice, I think. Um some uh added job opportunities for folks um would be good. I think in terms of the downtown area, um I would love to see more um, but like pedestrian, pedestrian-friendly um areas, um excuse me. Um yeah, I'm sorry.
Alright, any other questions for Amanda? Would someone like to make a motion?
I move that we appoint Amanda to the Newburgh Urban Renewal Agency.
I'll second it.
Advisory Committee.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Alright. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Looks like it passes unanimously, thank you, thank you Amanda, thank you for showing up.
Thank you, sorry, couldn't talk more.
Good Will, alright, uh I call the meeting adjourned.